Good morning, it's nine o'clock. March 20th, time for our Swanee County Regular Scheduled Board meeting. It's throwing me off at nine o'clock in the morning, but this morning I've asked Commissioner Fleming to open some indication in the pledge.
Let us pray. This morning, our Father, we come in your name. We thank you for support and life, health, and strength, and we thank you for all your blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you for grace and mercy. Pray, God, that you be with us, keep us safe, watch over and protect us. Bless us in our meeting, bless us in our decisions, give us strength, give us a mind to do your will. Help us to love, oh, God, help us to make a way out of no way. Father, bless our country, bless those that are troubled this morning, bless those that are standing in need of prayer. Look on our leaders of our country, bless us, be with us and stand by us. Father, we ask these blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is approval amendments, March 6, 2018, regular scheduled board meeting. Do they have any changes, corrections, or anything you wish to add? Hear none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Moving on to consent agenda. You got any items wish to pull for discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Item number nine, and I don't know that we really need to pull it, but if the board considers, if the board considers the recommendation for approval, I would ask that you file the approval with some tax changes that the county attorney and I want to make to it, some adjustments. Those would affect the donation, transfer and donation program.
Here, we'll pull it. Come right back to it. All right, I got two through eight, ten through twenty. Any others? None, I need a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions.
Ten through twenty.
Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, back to item number nine. What were you saying about the changes?
The integrity of the program would remain the same. There's some minor tax changes that we need to make though that address some issues of taxation. They need to be incorporated.
All right. Y'all have any questions for Mr. Harris or Mr. Pruvat?
It doesn't change the overall text.
Well, it will change the text. It will change the text, but the integrity of the program will be intact. It'll still be a donation program.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
When you guys do get done making your changes, you guys gonna email or contact us and let us know what they are? Okay.
Right. Because we'll hold off on the chairman's signature on the resolution until it's all complete anyway, but we can send copies out to everyone.
Okay.
All right, no have a motion to approve?
No.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson. Second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hill. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right. Moving on to staff reports. James Summers, Public Safety Director.
Commissioners, Chairman, morning. Little change for us this morning, in the morning time. As far as to give you a little update, we went in toward the plant that is building our fire trucks in South Dakota. We're looking at somewhere around an October delivery date, so we're excited with that. They're already in production. Our ambulances that we purchased, we're looking at a mid-April delivery date from Houston. So that's a desperate need at this point. We're having some downtime on some ambulances that we have due to the call load. Call load on average per month right now is running anywhere from 650 to 700 calls a month on average, so our guys are very busy. It is brush fire season, so mid-afternoon, we're getting into four to five brush fires a day on average right now, so every day, so that's keeping our crews pretty busy. So we're involved with our CPR programs in Branford and Livox, so that's continuing through the library system. We've also partnered with Vivid Visions for the demolition derby. I know that's already passed, but we partnered with the sheriff's office, Vivid Visions, and the school board to help raise money for Vivid Visions. Actually, our driver's here today, Mr. Stapleton, he was selected through our donations and we won't call it the...
Raffle.
The raffle program that we had done with Vivid Visions. So that was, he actually won his heat, his little heat race we had. So I think through that, they, Vivid Visions made $1,500 just by that raffle, and the winnings from the demolition derby were donated back to Vivid Visions, so that was great. We're partnering with the sheriff's office, I think, four to five times this year to help Vivid Visions raise funds for their Christmas program. So we're excited with that to try to help a partner within our community. Board members have any questions or comments?
I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I am curious about the, back when in the budget workshop, we talked about your, a program that would divide your non-emergency calls from your emergency calls, be able to track those, and I'm just wondering how that's going.
We're in our, we're just starting our second quarter with our billing company, so we're trying, we're finally getting a, finally, the startup on billing is a delay because the 45 to 50 days out on billing, so we're finally getting to a level that we can make some determinations and break things apart and get some good data. So that'll be coming to the board soon, once we get that gathered up and everything, so that, we're interested to see a lot of that information as well. So I've had a lot of discussions with our billing company. Everything's been great so far. We're actually exceeded our revenue return of where we projected to be. We're actually above that mark, so, which is good for the board and good for fire rescue as far as revenues and recoup of funds. So we're excited to see those.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to general business, item 22, discuss Christmas on the Square. Jimmy Norris, Executive Director of Chamber Commerce.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Great morning, Dr. Jackson. Pleasure to be here with you guys this morning, and we at the Chamber, I think it was probably our past president Travis Henry and I were here maybe six, seven months ago with a few updates. So we have a few updates we'd like to share with you today, and also talk a little Christmas on the square. It's right around the corner for us, so. I don't know if this year's president, Mr. Brandon Furnell, if you want to join me up here, or, so, you know, that way I can pass it off last year to Travis, this year I can pass it off to Brandon. To get started, kind of real quick, we just came off of our annual gala, which was the largest gala that we've had. I know several of you were able to attend. We appreciate that support very much. As you could see, it was a full house. We're desperate need of a place to, where we could put some more people, because we had a waiting list this year, probably 20 people, and that was after we added a couple tables to that event. Definitely was our largest event ever attended and probably our nicest event, and great, great turnout. Also, Leadership Swanee, which is a program that started for us in September this past year, actually ended February 15th, and we are graduating our class this year on March 29th at the train depot. So we had about 25 attendees to that event. We partnered with the University of Florida, and it was, it was a really nice event. We had one of our class attendees yesterday at the Chamber saying she had attended events before in different communities, one of them being in Atlanta, and ours by far was the best event she attended. So we were really glad to hear that. Also, jumping here anytime, boss. Well, we passed out these little flyers. Our next event coming up is the Father Daughter Dance. Each one of you got it. We just wanted to go ahead and make you aware of it. I'll give you that one if you want it.
Father Daughter Dance? Yeah. Anyway, this is, this is one of those events that it's an opportunity for us to do something a little different than we normally do, in terms of bringing dads and daughters together and sharing in some moments that sometimes they don't get the opportunity to do. So we can create an environment and the place for that, a venue for that. It's proven itself. This is our third year. We've been very successful with it, a lot of attendance, so we're encouraged to keep doing it.
Yeah, absolutely, and we look forward to you guys. I just want to go ahead and make you aware of that. It's only a few months down the road, so if you could, to help us get the word out. Also, about this, well, I guess it was maybe in August when we came last year, and we brought the Chamber Impact Magazine, which is our very, at that time, new directory that had an information guide with different articles and all of our business listings and things. We just want to let you know that this year, that will be published sometime around the 1st of July. We're moving it forward a little bit. Last year, we were a little bit later with that magazine, but, so, for any of you that are in the business community or have friends in the business community, it will have a list of all the Chamber members, but one new thing that we're doing this year is we're actually going to offer an opportunity, instead of buying an ad in that magazine, if you would like to write an article or story about your particular business, you will be able to do that in place of putting an ad in there. So it's just another way for businesses to get their name out there. So look for that to be going to print around July, so we should have them back in our hand by the 1st of August, instead of at the end of August. So we're moving it up about a month. Also, one thing we're really excited about, our Business of the Year, again, we appreciate the support of the folks that attend that. That's October the 1st, 2018. It will be at the National Guard Armory, and last year's winner, the small business, was Farmers Co-op, and our large business was Busy Bee. And we are glad to report that, you know, we've been able to work with the guys at Busy Bee a lot, and I know that, you know, Dr. Jackson knows this, and I'm sure all of you know that they are moving their headquarters here. And the relationship that the Chamber guys, and we've worked with them over the last several years, and especially with them partnering with us on our events, we were on them hard not to go to a different community where they had kind of already told us they were going, and so we're real proud that we were able to be somewhat of a guiding hand on getting Busy Bee to locate their new corporate office here in Swanee County. Next thing, anytime you want to talk, come on in. This little, this little, he's gonna get with me on Christmas on the square right here, because it's all his idea, all the changes are his idea. We've put before you this little survey card, and this is something the Chamber's been working with in conjunction with several people, Swanee Valley Electric, I've spoken to Mr. Gamble about it, and of course, Dr. Jackson, and the folks at the city as well. And this is just a survey that we want to put out community-wide, and it's very few questions, but it's just kind of a quality of life survey, and we're just trying to get some feedback of what our individual citizens think is important to us, to them, so that we can share it. We're gonna come back to you guys and the city, and who knows, maybe we can hold a joint workshop, Commissioner, and...
Bring that one up.
And see how that works out. But, but it's just an attempt for us to get some information, and we're gonna compile the information, and then we would like to get together a nice committee, so maybe we can get a win. And this may determine, it may be nothing more than we need to clean up the roads, or we may, we may need to put a new sign coming into town. What we want to gain by this information is for this group and this committee to come up with an attainable project, something that we can get a win with in six months to a year. We're not trying to go out here and put these goals in front of us that are 10 years out that we can't reach. So by doing this, we hope that we can come up with some new ideas, some fresh ideas, and then get a win or two, so we can get a team moving, and anytime you get a win, then more people want to be on that team. So, very simple, if you can, just get the word out. You'll see these all throughout the community. They'll be at the fair this week. There will be an email blast out to all the members, so we just wanted, really, these just came off the press this morning, so you guys are the first one to see them. So that's what that's about. All right, Christmas on the square. What's your ideas this year, boss?
I got, I got a lot of good notes.
To start with, I do want to thank, this event, I know several of you were down there last year, and you saw that we brought in snow for the first time. We were hoping for 2,500 people, I think we had 6,500. So it was a great evening and a very stressful evening for all of us at the Chamber and many of our volunteers and citizens. I do want to thank, there's some guys back here in the back, the sheriff sitting back here, he helped us greatly with that event, and he heard me on the radio panicking a few times, I need some backup down here in the snow piles because the kids were just taking it over. Jamie, he had trucks down there and generators, and I don't know how many times he blew up bouncy houses for us that went down because of all the kids. And then, of course, Greg with parts and wreck. They're always a team player when we do a festival, so we just want to really thank the commissioners and the county for allowing those guys to be a partner with us, because we could not do this event at all without them. So saying that, I'm gonna let you kind of get into the meat and potatoes of what this event is.
Meat and potatoes, okay. Well, we've done this for 33 years, and we just thought it would be a brilliant idea to just go to two days, just on a whim. No, I'm just kidding. We had been giving consideration to, the things that we do at the Chamber, to me, are kind of important in terms of how we analyze things, and it's not just a matter of assembling a board to get together and meet and have meetings and talk about things, but we really try to create action plans behind the things that we talk about and envision, and we've been successful in doing that, and we've taken that very seriously. This just happens to be another one of those that we have been staring down, and it's been staring us down in terms of how do we really take an event like this that's been established, that's been successful, and make it better based upon the demand and the vision that we've had. So in terms of the things that we've brought to the table, in terms of entertainment, I would say, and bringing more people into the area, it only makes sense to us to, and it's justifiable, to go to a two-day, two-day event. And I think we've announced that, that's not necessarily news to all of you, but in doing that, we've also got to be very strategic in how we go about it, breaking down each and every item, each and every hour or so. Because when you're bringing in people, vendors, food vendors, trucks, trailers, those type things, you've got to be on a tight schedule to get people in and get people out, allow us to pull off the entertainment, do those type things. So in terms of going to a two-day event, if you want me to break that down for you and give you a synopsis of that, what it's gonna look like, we are going to start our idea, I guess we've got to get formal approval for everything, but where we are right now, what we envision is bringing vendors in starting Friday morning early, getting them in place, getting them set up, so that we can open the doors, if you will, by 4:00 PM on Friday afternoon. The idea there, the concept, is to have a nighttime or night event, if you will, and in doing that, if we can have the vendors in place opposed to bringing them in at 4:00 PM, it's, we've just ran into somewhat of a train wreck behind the scenes of bringing vendors in and trying to pull off snow and bringing people in for the entertainment. So if we can have everybody in place, open the doors at 4:00, we're not combating that issue again. And then we can bring people in for the event, if you will, begin walking through the streets, seeing the vendors, and of course, participating in the various entertainment. Looking at your notes here.
Yeah, actually, this was kind of Thursday was...
Okay. So we want to back up a day. So you said, we're saying two days, now we're saying three days.
Well, technically, the event is two full days.
Yeah.
But it will officially kick off on Thursday evening with the Christmas tree lighting, ribbon cutting, and the ginger belt party, which will Thursday evening kick off. Arts and crafts and the full-fledged festival will be Friday and Saturday. So yes, it really does start on Thursday afternoon, and, you know, Dr. Jake keeps telling us, we gotta make it bigger and better to get more people to come to town, so we just, we just keep trying to get more days and more hours in the festival, but...
Yeah. So anyway, just to break that down for you too, a little bit further, some of the issues we ran into was, when you've got that many people downtown, and we weren't really prepared for it, we'll be the first to say that, we were anticipating 2,000, we had 6,000 or 7,000, it felt like. So we're gonna assemble volunteers, get things in place, but we're gonna have to offer more snow, more slides. We've got a commitment to bring that in. We've got a commitment for a rock wall, we've got more bouncy houses, and the other thing that we're gonna do to create some flow is to spread some of this out, not have it all concentrated right where the entertainment or the stage is, because at the same time, if we're having this event, if these vendors are coming into town on Friday, we don't want to have everything concentrated in one area, where the stage is and the snow is and all the kids are, and then these vendors are sitting over here lonely. So the idea amongst the board was, let's create some flow so we can get people walking through, so that's why we're strategically going to locate bounce houses, rock climbing, snow scattered throughout the event, and we've got a tentative map that we've started working on to try to create that environment, so.
You can see, I'm sure I'll... What we've tried to do is get it so that they're diagonally across from each other. Instead of everything being concentrated down at the main stage and down on 90, we're gonna have the snow in this portion, but then the other part, the kids area is with the bouncy houses, rocks behind the wall, and everything else will be on the other opposite side of the festival. Doing that, talking with other people that do festivals and obviously entertainment venues, you want to, you want to a little make the people travel right across our food area, and this is our food area. So the idea here is to get people moving, so that then they'll spend some dollars.
Yeah. Because that's got, there's got to be an impact there for the vendors too, there's got to be, you know, some significance, so that's gonna help create that. And everything else, for the most part of Saturday, will remain the same. I mean, obviously, we're gonna clear out the snow so we can have all that lined up on 90 for the parade, and that's how the event will conclude on Saturday. That's about all we have for Christmas on the square, unless there's any questions on Christmas on the square, comments?
We will have fireworks again on Friday night, so that is a big part, and Busy Bee and Florida Public Utilities are a big player in that. They help us put that on, but that will continue to be Friday night, and the parade will be, as you said, on Saturday.
And Christmas on the square, always on the, what, the first Saturday?
It's always on the first Saturday, which this year will be December 1st. Now, the Friday will actually be in November, and so will the Thursday, but we're always the first Saturday, so. But I guess, you know, for us, what we'd like to do, we wanted to present the plan, and we've mentioned to you guys before, we understand that that Friday, it's always interesting to us because we've got to basically close the streets downtown, and so, you know, we're asking, obviously, if you guys could help support us on that, and of course, we'll be speaking, you know, with our local businesses, but we also know that their county offices downtown. And in the past, they've been very receptive on that day of closing early to kind of help get out of our way, but we wanted to come, you know, in March for this December event to see if we could go ahead and maybe, if possible, work with those guys way ahead of time, so that we could...
Yes. What I wanted to talk to y'all about was get some ideas from the board, Mr. Harris, with them having an all-day Friday event, how do we handle the parking, Forest County employees, downtown courthouse, and all that area? Because obviously, we ain't gonna be in and out of there driving, the roads are gonna be shut down. I just wanted to get some thought, I talked to Mr. Jimmy about it, and just figured we'd go ahead and bring it to the board so we could get some feedback early.
You want to do a parking ride that one day?
Rather than wait till November to decide all this.
Yeah.
Do a parking ride.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's obviously, you know, we're on the city streets, but it really affects the county offices the most.
Oh, yeah, I mean, every bit of the county parking is right there at Christmas on the square.
Right. And we wanted, like I say, Commissioner Gamble and I spoke about it, we wanted to bring it to you guys and just, you know, so we could go ahead and see if we could figure out a way. I know, you know, Lake City has the Lusted Festival downtown, and they shut, they shut down, and they have a couple ways that they go about it, but you mentioned parking ride and a couple of things like that, but...
You could put them at the old Pigley Wiggly parking lot, park there and pick them up and bring them in.
Right, and, you know, it's not that we're gonna have every single spot taken, but the basic thing is the streets would be blocked downtown and you wouldn't be able to come through.
Well, it's not just the fact that you're gonna be shutting the parking lot for the employees.
Players, the people visiting.
The people that's gonna need your business Friday. It's gonna be walk-in traffic only.
Right, yeah. And we know in the past that some of the offices were, you know, they like, they closed at lunch, and in supervisor relations, property appraiser office, they were all fine with that, and they just kind of shut down about lunch that day. So we spoke with them last year about this, all of those players at our general meeting and told them coming forth, and they seem receptive to the fact that if they had plenty of notice and if the county signed off on it, that they may be able to actually shut down on that Friday. They were on board with that as long as, you know, it was something that was doable. Now, we obviously know if the court's in session and things like that, that we can't control that, so, but we have had a couple conversations with those guys also about scheduling of any trials or anything on that Friday, so I'm hoping they're working on that for us.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
On the, on the, as far as the county vehicles, I know we have to park a lot of these county vehicles in that area where the food court's gonna be, do we have the space over at the administration building and the various departments that, where those vehicles, that we can park them over the weekend? That way they're, we don't have any, they're not taking up any spaces?
Yeah, we can get ours out of there, don't have any problem. In fact, for day parking, running right over here beside this building would help while things are happening.
Yes, and that's what they've done in the past, like the building department and some of those guys, because they keep the vehicles parked over the weekend, they've just moved them over to, I think last year there may have been a few in this parking lot.
Right.
So they just kind of moved them over. So those really...
And the grassy area here, I think will be fine.
No, the problem's just gonna be the day-to-day business for Friday.
For Friday, that's right.
Tax collector and the courts are gonna be your big issues.
Yes, yeah, and we have spoken with the judges on that, and they are trying to be sure nothing gets scheduled on that day, so then that helps. And of course, you know, we spoke with Mr. Berry about this last year. We've been trying to kind of ease into this over the last couple of years and kind of prepare people, and obviously, you know, he has to follow the rule, so depending on how that lays out will depend. And we want to work with, you know, we don't, we want to make this as painless as possible for everyone, while also try to bring more people to town and let them spend some more money and get some more tax dollars in the community.
And our earlier discussions, the hope was that if we went ahead and decided kind of what direction we wanted to go, that maybe we could lead by example.
Others would follow.
The other constitutionals would kind of follow suit. If it's gonna be an all-day event Friday, I mean, nobody's gonna really be able to get downtown. You know what Christmas on the square is like when it's going, so I mean, walk-in traffic's not gonna be much at our county offices, so.
And again, I think we have control over that, but not over the courts and all, so it really kind of decides on...
No, we're just a piece of the puzzle.
Right, right.
But I figured, hopefully, that a lot of, I know a couple of the constitutionals, they'll look to see what we're doing, and if we are, then they'll follow suit. Some of them are bound by what the court's doing, so if the court's open, they're gonna be open.
Right.
But they can run a skeleton crew, I believe, if they have to.
Definitely give us enough heads up, enough time to work on it, come up with a decision, probably sooner than later, though.
Oh, yeah, we need to come up with something. I mean, we ain't got to decide it the day, but I just wanted the board to be informed of it, but I don't know if we need to shut down for that whole day, those couple offices we have up there, or make them park somewhere else, and...
Our people can, I mean, for the few that we have and low volume of traffic, that they should anticipate, our people can park over here and walk across this block and a half.
Yeah, we just, we just need them out of the way for that day.
And I guess the people that would be visiting those offices could park here as well, you know, if they were directed to do so.
All those parking lots are under the board of commissioners, can we, if we shut them down, we don't have anywhere else to direct other people to park, as far as the other county departments?
Well, I think everything that's grassy between here and the stadium, if we put some, a couple people out there to help direct traffic in and out, park them, they could exit onto Parsley, coming in from the rear over here next to the retention pond, and then...
You don't really have anything going off Parsley, do you?
We'll have the parking lot out here in the front as well.
If, yeah, if you, if you actually look at the map, Wilbur really, it's as far as we go, where Wilbur comes in, right over here, we can't block the post office, obviously, so we are, you know, north of there on that side, so Parsley really is nothing as far as what we do. We, the vendors that do come in and set up, they do use the parking over at the stadium to stage after they set up their booths, but we, as far as Parsley out here, is nothing that's within.
Our people can park over here and they can walk, I mean, it's not, like I said, it's a block, block and a half at the most, so we can do that with our people.
But I'm talking about the parking that's gonna be, they're not gonna be able to go down pine to get to the parking behind the tax collector and courthouse.
Yeah.
They're not gonna be able to get to the parking.
That would be closed off.
Yeah, that's gonna be closed off, so we gotta provide them with parking if they're, if they're gonna be open, I don't know if they are.
Well, we could put some large parking signs out here, and then they'll have to Well, we could put some large parking signs out here and then they'll have to decide if they wanna do business that day or come back Monday. But, I mean, we can put the large signs out here, that's the best we can do, and then block off the other roads.
And I don't think, just judging from like past years, I know, you know, like last year they closed at lunch, a couple of officers closed at lunch. And so it, it really was an issue from what they explained to us, the traffic wasn't that high on that day. And we are gonna be obviously promoting that this thing is going on downtown, so, um.
What time are you kicking off Friday?
The, the actual event will open at four. So the, the theory is on this is instead of, previously, you know, we set up all through the night and opened on eight AM on Saturday. So, so this year, we will not set up through the night, we'll start set up at six or seven Friday morning. They will set up till maybe two o'clock on Friday and then the doors will open about four. And then the festival, the idea is for the festival to start in the afternoon, especially cause a lot of folks, you know, obviously are working that day. And then give people that are traveling to town time to get here. And then it's gonna continue into the night, so the, the arts and crafts and the food and everything is gonna stay open until ten o'clock. So we're trying to give it more of that Christmas feel. As Travis mentioned to you, last year, the board is really wanting that festival to feel more like Christmas. And so we're, we're, uh, working with Jamie, he's trying to help us out on some of the lighting for the streets. So we wanna turn Friday into more of a night event that the snow will be going on during that time. And then also, we wanna capture that crowd and keep them downtown for the fireworks, which we have typically been shooting off around nine o'clock. It's, it's a whole different feel to that festival at night.
Oh, yeah.
Than it is during the day. So that's kind of our attempt, that it would be open from evening to night and then from there it would, but it'll take all day to make that happen, you know?
So the big thing, mainly during our, during business hours, is just gonna be the, the vendors coming in and setting up.
Yes.
Foot traffic.
Now, saying that, it's.
I mean, it's gonna be chaotic.
It's random sometimes, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's backed up with trucks and trailers and booths and people in the streets. So it is crowded.
Right.
Uh, and all the streets are crowded. But, uh, you know, we, we definitely, uh, think it's a worthwhile thing to do.
I do, and I, I want us to work with them if we can, as much as we can to make it a success.
I mean, it.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, what, when are you planning on closing down Highway ninety? Will it be on Thursday evening?
Thursday evening.
It'll be closed through Saturday?
Saturday, yes, sir, till about nine o'clock Saturday.
Okay, so, uh, we realize that we have, uh, that we're gonna have more traffic on Friday, Thursday evening and Friday, it's gonna be diverted. How are we preparing for that diversion? Because obviously, we're gonna need the Sheriff's Department, probably Highway Patrol.
We, we, we meet just like in years past, it's basically the same roads that we always close, we're just closing them earlier.
Just on Saturday, you have a little less traffic, cause you have less truckers on the road, you have a little less, uh.
Well, yes, sir, but like last year, we closed all of those roads on Friday. Uh, not, not, let me restate it, not all of the roads. We did close ninety at probably ten AM last year.
Did you?
Uh, the secondary roads, we didn't close until a little later in the afternoon to allow employees to get out. But we did close ninety last year and all of the routes, the bypass routes are already established, uh, have been signed off on, not this year, but previously, we've not had any problems. So, um, last year, we, we didn't see, we didn't see a lot of problem with ninety being closed as far as on our side. And then working closely with, obviously, you know, the city, PD and, and the Sheriff's Department, those guys, uh, rescue, all those guys. I'm telling y'all, they really step up. We, we, they, they really, really help, cause we couldn't do the, i- if you think about bringing all of those people to town with the chamber and a volunteer board of twelve people and the few volunteers that we get, um, that's a big undertaking. It's a big undertaking and without, without the support of those guys, man, we, there is no way we could do it.
I seem to believe that the, the more disruption there is, the bigger the event feels anyways.
Yeah, well, well, then it felt really big last Friday. When those snowballs were flying and hitting us in the back of the head and, uh, so, uh, we, uh, we definitely, uh, appreciate, you know, you guys trying to work with us on the thing. And that's why we're here early, we wanna, we wanna be way up front. We're actually, are scheduling our first, which we call our safety meeting, um, which that's April the eleventh. And on that day is our very first contact that we have with all of the players between the city and the county and Sheriff's Department, Fire Rescue. Um, also, like CH two on the city side, um, all of those people, we bring together in one room to kinda share these plans with them and then start getting input and preparing. So our very first meeting on that will be, um, April eleventh and we'll have that at the, the Church of God at eleven thirty. So all of y'all are invited to attend and we actually would love it if some of you could attend, just so you're, you're in the loop.
Um, have you got a meeting set up with the constitutionals about shutting down or doing anything?
Not, not a definite meeting, no, sir, we don't. We, we have spoken to them, um, several times, just individually and, um.
Did you, is that how you did it last year, was just individually or did you have a meeting?
Yeah, we, we actually ha- kinda had a general discussion like this at our safety meeting and announced it early on, which last year, the first meeting was in May, yep. And then as we moved forward, we made them aware that we were gonna try to bring in the snow, which we did. And so we were asking and making them prepared that half a day on Friday, we were gonna be disrupting things a little bit, so. And, and they were okay with that, you know, they were all okay with that. So, uh, this year, and also, we mentioned at that last meeting that this year, we planned on doing this, that we planned on going to two days. And, uh, so they, they, they seem to be on board with that. And, uh, we have tried to keep that communication door as wide open as we can with them, so. So far, we haven't met, you know, I mean, obviously, it's gonna be a little inconvenient, but they see the big picture, it's for the greater good then. And a little bit of inconvenience on that one, but.
Is this due to the, um, uh, two-day event?
Yes, sir.
The vendors are gonna have to pay a little bit more?
They are, and that's an incentive for the chamber also. Uh, that, that, that is part of it. I mean, it, it obviously is not like double the fee of what we typically charge, but especially on this first year, because we do not have any idea what the crowd attendance will be. So we are up in the fee structure, we're working on that now. We actually go live April one with registration and, um, so we will have vendors, um, start signing up here. And already, it actually has a list of folks that have already called to sign up for this year, so. And that will be a little tricky. Probably what you're gonna see is in the past year, we had over three hundred arts and craft vendors and I think thirty-two, uh, food, food vendors, thirty-two, thirty-three food vendors. So what you're gonna probably see is maybe, uh, not quite as many on the craft side. And we're, we're just guessing, but when we go to the two-day, we know that's gonna eliminate maybe, maybe a couple of the mom and pops that, you know, that's too much for them or, or they just want one day. But when we sent out our survey over a year ago to ask what the people wanted, you know, that's, that's on the vendor side. They were looking for two days because, uh, we have vendors that come from South Dakota, New York, Texas. And when they travel so far to come set up for eight hours, um, you know, it's really not quite worth it to them. But if we can give them a two-day event, and, and that's what the survey came back to us and said, we were really, the number one thing was, can you go to two days? So we come in, we set up and we're there for two days. So obviously, it does help us, we can charge a little more and, uh, and that's a part of it. But also, then obviously, if they're here for two days, they're staying longer and.
What about the schools?
The schools, we actually spoke with, um, a superintendent last year about this. And, uh, we tried to get it on their school calendar. Unfortunately, the school calendar was already in place, cause they were so far out in front of it. So he has given us his blessing as far as allowing the students to take, you know, field trips or, or things like that. Now, saying that, the initial plan was to be open all day on Friday, but when we revised it and decided we're going more toward, towards a four o'clock to ten o'clock, now, school will be out basically by the time the event kicks in. But we did contact him about some possible participation from some of the school groups, the bands, choir, you know, different things to, to be a part of. And he actually said, moving forward to next year, if we wanted to move the times up on Friday to open earlier, he would a hundred percent be in support of doing that.
Any other questions?
I wanna, I, when, if we can, can we maybe go talk to the, uh, if you need me to, go with the constitutionals, talk to them together?
Sure.
Cause, uh, my biggest concern that I wanna work with is on additional parking, to get them out of those parking lots, cause I think that's gonna be our problem. But I mean, I don't think it's gonna be a problem with them, but just so they know we're all on board.
Right, yeah, a- absolutely. And, and I, and I know, like I said, we tried to talk, I know we, like, with Barry back here, we, we spoke about that and he was, you know, basically said anything he could do to help if they had to be open, uh, you know, uh, again, you know, maybe we can look at, over at the Workness area, some other places that are closed, so it may, just, we're just talking about it one day.
Right.
And they, and they would really love y'all to give them a day off, I'm sure of it.
I kinda wanna lean that way, but I'm not hearing anything from the board about it, so I'm.
I'm like you guys, I don't think there's gonna be a whole lot going on. And even if I was wanting to come down to the tag office and I knew all this was going on on a Friday, I would probably postpone it. Well, then, if they were, if they were off, uh, couldn't we not get them all to volunteer at Christmas on the square? Well, look at there, there that is.
I was thinking about our employees. Volunteer every one of them.
Well, give them a shirt. Well, I think if you guys wanna get together and go talk to the constitutionals and maybe come back at our next meeting, we could probably.
I'll do that with you, if you wanna go.
Move forward.
Try to set up, at least phone call with them when we're both together, I'll do that.
I'm good with that, if everybody else?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
We got, we got plenty of time, at least two weeks, don't we?
It's here before you know it.
I know.
Well, and, and like I say, registration for us starts on April the first and, uh, you know, obviously, we're gonna start selling an event, anticipating we're gonna be open two days, so, you know.
Mr. Chairman.
We're gonna make it work, that's for sure.
Mr. Chairman, how many, uh, Mr. Harris, how many of our employees are actually four-day employees?
None of the ones downtown.
None of the ones down, yeah.
Okay, so, um, just the ones out in the county. The reality, Friday's not a bad day, you know, it's not as bad as, as, as the other four days of the week, uh, for us. And all the ones in, in town, we can get to volunteer.
Well, we've got plenty of opportunity for volunteering. And I know some of you guys were down there last year and saw a lot of that and we appreciate that. But it is, uh, exciting and like I say, this year, we're, we're, we're going even bigger. We're bringing in, like Brandon mentioned, more snow, more slides and, and more things for the kids to do. Uh, and trying to get really back to that Christmas feel like, uh, like our board set out to do several years ago, so. In, in, in this world, if you look at the events that are out there, and of course, Ms. Karen does most of that work and she's in contact with different festivals, uh, you know, you're either growing or you're dying. And, and if we just sit back and we don't continue to try to evolve and make changes, this thing will go away. And it is such a huge event that, uh, we certainly, we certainly don't wanna see it go away. So it, it is challenging at times to keep refreshing it and come up with new ideas, but that's, that's certainly what we're trying to do by moving some things around and the snow piece that we added last year and then this year, kinda changing the whole flow and going to two days.
Or move it to the park or the, uh, Coliseum. Messing with you.
This, this, this year, the board did vote that we will be downtown, this year.
I'm messing with you.
So, we'll see, moving forward.
Just let's get together next week until we can't talk to them and then I'll bring something back to the board.
Okay.
Follow me, I appreciate it, fellas.
Oh, thanks, guys, very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on, item twenty-three, discuss possible board action, business incentive grant application by Bright Star Academy, Dr. Jackson.
Once again, it is a great day in beautiful Swanee County and just listening to the chamber, uh, it's a sense of excitement. The county is pulsating and, uh, from an economic development standpoint, uh, this spans way beyond our, our county limits. Last week, I was at my Enterprise Florida Board meeting and, and it's always good when the governor and his staff actually mentions Swanee County. Uh, once again, it, it, uh, it says that, uh, what we're doing here in the county is getting out, uh, to, uh, to the world. And, and basically, that's our charge, is to take Swanee County to the world and invite them in, uh, be it tourists or be it economic development. Uh, also, uh, the governor's, uh, budget, uh, was signed on Friday. And once again, there's another pot of eighty-five million dollars for the governor's job growth grant, uh, which, uh, we were recipient in the, in the first round, three point one million. And also, uh, the appropriations, even though we didn't get everything, uh, we didn't get vetoed, so we did get the three hundred thousand dollars we, Mr. Harris had originally estimated, the request for one point seven million, so we got three. But what I wanna say is, um, I was talking with the chairman last night and really hats off to our Board of County Commissioners and the administrator's office for, uh, your work with the legislature. It makes all the difference in the world, uh, when you all are present, uh, when you are lobbying, when you are speaking to the state representatives. So I just wanna let you all know that, uh, it is known, it is seen. Cause if you look at the lists of the local projects, uh, most of them got killed in the conference, uh, committee meetings. Uh, we were able to make it out of there. And then the governor, if you looked at Chris Doolin's, uh, list, the governor vetoed, uh, most of the local projects and ours was able to remain.
Like I say, most of the ones that made it out of committee, he, he cut them.
Yep, he cut them.
Yep.
And so it really speaks to your work and basically the reputation that Swanee County is developing and the great things that's happening in this county. So it's not only the Board of County Commissioners, it's the chamber, uh, it's, uh, other departments, uh, that are working so hard. So, when I get excited, it's because things are happening. And when folks are talking about you, it's because the county is pulsating and the world feels us and sees us. And, uh, it makes all the difference when we talk about economic development, because basically, it gives us positive perception in the marketplace. Uh, just, uh, we, once again, have another incentive application. And, uh, as I shared with the, uh, city council last night, you know, when you look at, uh, the four point three percent overall job growth that we leave the state last year, it is Swanee County doing seven, eight jobs at a time. If you remember, our last incentive was seven jobs, uh, a few weeks ago, it was ten jobs. And at the end of the year, those jobs add up. And so we have another incentive program. It, uh, requests, it's Bright Stars Academy, um, basically, which is a, a childcare facility. It's a business that exists now and they're looking at building, uh, new building and expansion, uh, to, uh, the services that they provide. Uh, their capital investment is estimated to be at one point two million. Uh, they, uh, the new facility size is about fourteen thousand square feet. And once again, they're gonna create, uh, seven net new jobs. The average wage is fifty thousand dollars. And so once again, those numbers keep pushing up, uh, our wages here in the county. They're close, uh, uh, proxen- that they are very close to utilities, because they're within the city limits, uh, which gave them, uh, eighteen points, uh, which entitled them to up to four years of Avalon tax rebate, as well as tangibles. And what we are recommending, uh, that total, uh, incentive, it would be thirty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars, uh, over four years. And if you remember, we spread that rebate out over seven years, which means that on the, based on their performance, uh, they would be entitled up to four thousand seven hundred and five dollars, uh, per year. Any question?
Any question for Dr. Jackson? Hey, just for the benefit of, of the board and the audience, would you just real quick break down how the incentive works as far as the, they have to meet their requirements?
Yes, and so basically, since it's a performance-based, uh, incentive program, uh, after they complete, uh, the construction and they get rolling, basically, we want to, each year, look at their nine forty-ones. Nine forty-ones tell us how many jobs and basically whether or not they're meeting the average salary. Uh, on the capital investment, uh, we just go down to the property appraisers' office and we look at the value or the increase in the capital investment that's both Avalon as well as tangibles. We request a, a list of their employees with zip codes. We request a list of their employees with zip codes, once again, that becomes an additional check, and the final test is they have to pay.
Their taxes.
Their taxes, and so, as they say at the cleaners, no ticky, no clothing, and so, in our case, if they don't perform, and the major piece of that is paying their taxes, there is no rebate, and so, I, I like to make it real clear, we're not advancing any dollars upfront, basically, what we're doing is rebating a portion of their taxes that they pay in, and this program is totally different from tax abatement. Tax abatement, you're locked into a certain percentage, and as the value of the property and the tangibles, well, the properties increase on tax abatement, that percentage stays with the increase. In this program, when the board approves a certain amount, and in this case, thirty-two thousand nine thirty-seven, most businesses are increasing in value, well, this program, you're locked at what the board approved, and so, we are growing as well as incentivizing businesses in this county, and, which is very unique throughout the state of Florida, basically, we're being benchmarked every day, and been asked to come and speak and share how we're doing this, so, once again, Swanee County is in the lead on incentives, and basically, if you don't perform, you don't give up any money.
That was the biggest thing.
Yep.
All right, sir, any, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Just the wishes of the board, motion to approve the application?
Motion approved, that's seconded.
And a motion by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Session, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Moving on, item twenty-four, discuss possible board action, any issues associated with water or wastewater at I-75 and 136, Randy Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have closed on the properties.
Both of them?
That we needed, yes, sir. So, we now own those properties that we need for the water plant and the sewer plant. Mr. Deraby is still working on a lot of preliminary layout on the sewer plant, we also, our advertisement is still out on the RFQs for utilities engineers, I anticipate scoring those respondents sometime soon, and then coming back with a recommendation on selection of engineers to the board, probably in the next, I'd say, within the next month, may not be that long, so we're moving on. Also, talking with DOT about right away out there to accommodate the lines, and everything else that we can do in preliminary stages right now.
Any questions for Mr. Harris?
No, thanks, sir.
Moving on, item twenty-five, no additional addition items today, moving on to twenty-six, public concerns and comment, anybody wishing to speak?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board, I, I gave the chairman a couple of items, I'd just like to kinda, just announcements, and one is on Heritage Park, we are planning a major event on April the fifth, which is the Keepers and Volunteer Luncheon, and many of you have probably already received an invitation to this event, and we are encouraging you to go ahead and RSVP by March the twenty-sixth. If you've never attended one of these events out there, it is a, the Heritage Park, you know, it is, is, we don't receive any governmental funds to run the facility itself, it is funded by the Keepers, the Keepers are a group of people, are benefactors, that, that gives financial support to run the day-to-day operations at the park, and the park cannot be run by the volunteer groups, the volunteer groups are the ones that, that comes in on a weekly, sometime daily basis, to do the grounds, the cleanup, and all the little things that needs to be done to make that a beautiful park, that is, that is inviting to, not only to the community around here, but people all around, we, it's a major stop now for wedding venues, so we're advertising and getting people in, and our wedding bookings has quadrupled over the last year, so, come out to this event if you can, then you could kinda see, if you got any confusions about what's going on, it would be explained in forms of a program, and we have a beautiful catered lunching, it will be an outdoor event, so dress accordingly, and we have some of the officials that usually be on the program, like Dr. Jackson, he's a staple, he's been coming out for the last couple of years to give us a CRA and kinda, kinda economic update to the folks there, so, come out and be part of it, if you did not receive a, an invitation, let me know, and I will give you an invitation, and please RSVP to come out and be part of that program on April the fifth, from eleven-thirty till one P.M. The other announcement I'd like to make is, I'd like to, I thank the board and Mr. Harris on support they have given the Douglas Alumni Association in allowing us to apply for an historical marker for the Douglas Center. I was notified yesterday from the Division of Historical Resources that the state that our application was approved, so the historical marker will be forthcoming, there's a few little administrative items that has to be taken care of, when we submit the application, we give them a proposed text that will actually go on the marker, then the state kinda look at the history and kinda give us some, an alternative text on it, and us a couple of little administrative errors on it, so we will resolve those administrative errors, oversights rather, and get back to the state, and from that point on, it would take, they say, from up to twelve weeks for them to actually manufacture the marker, then it would be shipped here, and I've coordinated with Mr. Harris and the, of the county, I guess, maintenance will actually do the installation of it, and from that point, we will probably schedule an, an unveiling of the historical marker, making the Douglas Center a, an official historical site for this community, and again, I'd like to thank the board and Mr. Harris and others that supported us in this effort, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I'm Bo Hancock, sixty-one thirty-five Wiggins Road, I wish y'all would take just a moment, go back to item number nine on the consent agenda, I don't have a problem with the changes and what your ultimate goal is, you know, to revise and correct, put better, stronger language, whatever, what I am concerned about is the government in the sunshine, y'all sat here, gave the chairman approval to assign, and the corrections are, if necessary. Now, perception somehow, rightly or wrongly, becomes reality, the Democrat had did two or three months ago, that far back, a article on the government in the sunshine, now, the perception, rightly or wrongly, and, bring it back, instead of saying, okay, Mr. Chairman, they can make the changes in the interim time, and you just sign off on it, you have our permission, you don't know what those changes are, but you gave advance approval for something, you don't know what changes are going to be there. If I was a county employee, I would be very upset that y'all just blanket gave approval for something without being able to see what those changes were, I would just ask you to reconsider and bring it back after, for approval at the next meeting with those changes, I don't think it's that critical time-wise, and I, I really don't think that it would be a problem, but you remove that perception, you're trying to do something outside the sunshine, or in the shade, that's, that was my concern, that's all, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
No, other than, like I asked, make sure we all get an email of it, just look at those changes, and that, that's kinda our, would be my time, Mr. Hancock, if I see something.
I, I can.
Well, we could bring it back, though.
I, I can put a copy back in informational items in your next agenda as well, but the reality is, the substantive part of the thing isn't gonna change, the only issue that Mr. Pravat and I are gonna address is an issue that is associated with taxes of the employees that are donating for the time, we're just gonna massage the language to ensure they're not being taxed on that, but the substantive part of that isn't changing at all, so, we'll circulate the adjustments, the copies back to the commissioners, and bring the completed product back under informational items in the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, don't we have a, that the state, I know the state did this, when it worked for corrections, they had a program where they were donating leave.
Yeah, we copied basically the same program.
Same copy, so.
Each state department has its own policy, it's generally following the guidelines of the Department of Management and Budget, but each one's tweaked just a little bit, and there's about four words that are missing in this document that need to be stuck in it, and it'll be fine.
I'd just say, Mr. Hancock, any, any decision the board makes can be undone, three votes, with three votes, so, if we don't like the changes, then we can always undo them.
Moving on to item twenty-seven, administrator comments, do you have anything, if you don't, you need to go on by there.
I was gonna mention one thing to you, when Dr. Jackson was talking about the three hundred thousand that we were granted in the appropriations that we had requested, I want the board to know that I had a very long conversation with DOT about a week ago, actually, it was on a Friday, five o'clock, we were on the phone for about twenty minutes, they wanted to know more about what we were actually doing out there, that one point seven million dollar request that I had made, I'm hopeful that we still are awarded that one point seven million that we need for the crossing and for the construction of the road. I was asked once by another newspaper, what I was, it was a out-of-county newspaper, they had noticed that I had applied in two or three different venues for funding, they said, well, what are you gonna do with this money when you get it, because it exceeds the amount that you need to do the project, I said, it's unlikely that I'm gonna get all of those awarded, so, the first one that meets my need will suffice, and the rest of it, after that, won't be awarded, because DEO tracks all of that, so I'm still hopeful at this point that maybe we can obtain the entire one point seven. So far, as I had mentioned before, I had asked the program administrator of CDBG to allow me to take the balance that was left over after the construction of the rail spur and apply that, they agreed, but I would prefer not using those funds, just because they are so difficult to deal with the paperwork on, and that is not a comment, that's a criticism of the program administrators, just the way that the federal government established the bureaucracy is so to so, associated with those funds, so, with the three hundred thousand, we've got at least another million on a one point seven million dollar project, but if DOT comes through with all of it, then I'll send the CDBG funding back, because we can't switch it to anything else. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks, sir. Item twenty-eight, board members' requests and comments, start with you, Mr. Hale.
A real request, I guess, I do have a comment, I see Mr. Pete Collins up in the crowd this evening, and I know he and I had a conversation on Saturday, and I just felt like I should bring this up, especially since he's here, I do have Mr. Harris and Mr. Pravat working on this, but we do have a problem with the landfill out on Boys Ranch Road, I think we've known this for a while, I think it's been ongoing, but I did wanna shed some light on that, and if Mr. Pravat, if you don't mind, could you just speak to where we're at and the procedures we're taking to try to take care of this problem, some of the things we've done, or Mr. Harris, I know all of you have been involved in trying to help me with this issue.
Mr. Hale, Commissioner Hale, Mr. Pravat tells me I can't do what I wanna do.
Okay.
I know the, the company's dragging all manner of mess out into the county road and creating safety issues for the people that have to drive by it, but Mr. Pravat says that he won't get me out of jail if I do the things that I had suggested, so, he's got a better plan, so let's let him share that plan.
Okay.
Basically, what we're doing is, we're setting a paper trail, you know, for them that has been problematic for them, as for what we can actually do to go out there and make them do some things that is problematic with it, but if we set the paper trail that they are having a problem out there, then if the events do happen, you know, accidents do happen, or other things that occur out there, it becomes problematic for them with their insurance carrier and whether or not you can go forward, there are some other items that we're, again, you have to set the trail for, and then address it from a standpoint that, you know, it's on, on the highways, our particular ordinances don't have all of the requirements that we need, but we just move forward, kind of pushing the envelope as, as where we are and what we're allowed to, to be able to do, we had addressed this problem in another format about three years ago, you know, when we were looking at logging ordinances and ordinances that had to do with mining and everything, bringing the stuff, you know, off, onto the roads and everything, but this board did not pass those things at the time, there were other concerns from not the trash aspect, but like with product from agricultural trucks, whether it be solids or potatoes flying off trucks, you know, onto the highways too, but the board at that particular time didn't choose to address it, even though we were prepared to, we prepared the items, so, that's something that you can reconsider to put some teeth into what's been going on in the past, but that, again, gotta bring that back to y'all, there's not anything really out there that we can go in there and club them, you know, with, we have to just keep picking, 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 until they cause you a problem, and then, because they have notice and everything of it, then y'all can address it privately, but we do have an opportunity, if we redo an ordinance, you know, to address these types of concerns, can't be just this concern, but we need to broaden it out just a little bit, like some of the other areas that we've talked about, and that's what our recommendation's gonna be as we move forward.
Yes, sir, if you would, step to the podium, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Pete Collins, I live out on County Road 795, thank you, this is the first meeting I've ever been to, and normally, we don't complain, but the issues on this road are really detrimental to our vehicles, we've been enjoying mud clods the size of volleyballs now for a number of years, between my father, myself, and my sister, we've had seventeen flat tires and a broken windshield, this kinda gets in our pocketbook, but it also is time-consuming, takes time away from us, et cetera, et cetera, the, the broken windshield that I received, I was following a, a C and D landfill truck out there from town, and I was not too close to the truck, but I saw either a white rock or a piece of cement fly off the back of the truck, bounce three times in front of me, and land right in the middle of my windshield, and I have not talked to all my neighbors, but I'm quite sure that I could find a number of neighbors who've also endured the flat tires, and I can't prove this, but there's been two ladies out there on a highway that have had severe crashes out there, and I'm suspect, I suspect that possibly, they may have picked up a nail and had a tire go down, they just ran. They just ran completely off the road and crashed into the fence. This has happened twice, and one was recently. Like I said, this is speculation on my part, but it is a problem, and I appreciate your help. And, you know, we need to do something. The gravel out there now, they went ahead and put down the screenings, you know, which helps solve the mud problem, but now we've got a road covered in gravel. You know, rocks flying up, breaking windshields, along with still a large amount of mud, we can't keep our cars clean. Now, that's a problem. You know, out of a courtesy, I called these people at CND landfill, and the lady I talked to said it was not her problem, point blank, end of discussion. We need some relief. I can get petitions signed, do whatever you want me to do, and certainly willing to do that, I'll talk to all my neighbors. But I'd like to show the board, if that's okay, what we're dealing with here. I have a picture here, if I can find it, of what we're dealing with. Of course, Mr. Hale, I presented him with his nail belt, and he has it in his possession.
Yep.
This is construction.
Roofing nail, yep.
Debris. I picked it up right out of the middle of the road, directly in front of the CND landfill.
And he's correct. He's, he's not the only one. I've received phone calls about this. He's just happened to be here, and I didn't mean to put him on the spot, but I'm.
I don't want to.
No, I came here for that reason. Thank you, Don.
Good.
The first flat tire that I had, I took down here to the old Gil Tire company. This was a couple of years ago. And they fixed the flat, and we got to looking at my other tires. Two other tires had three or four nails or screws in them as well. You know, I run Michelin tires. These are expensive tires, and I can't keep my car clean and hit those clods with a bumper of my car. It's not, it's not real good for a car. But, you know, we just need to figure something out. It is a conundrum. We have trucks coming in that are turning, and when they turn in, they slow down, it slings that stuff out the cracks of the tailgate. This is what's happening. And when they come out, I suppose the same thing. When they turn those large trucks, they bounce when they hit that highway, and all this stuff is flushing out. But I've stopped there a number of times. I can, I can go out there almost any day and pick up a number of nails and screws. And it is a conundrum. I agree. You know, to a point, it's not the, the landfill's problem, but it is their problem. They're the one bringing this stuff in. They're buying it or taking it in, et cetera, et cetera. And we all have to live with it. You know, what the, the ultimate plan of action would be to satisfy everybody. I'm a business person, too. I want everybody to thrive and, and do good business, but I don't want to be paying, my family doesn't want to be paying, my neighbors don't want to be paying for their business. That's all we ask. We just would like to get it straightened up. I've got pictures of the, of the road this morning that I took on the way here. It's covered in gravel and mud, and I did not stop and look for nails, but I can assure you they're there. So that's really all I got to say. I appreciate you listening to me. Whatever we need to do, I'll be glad to help get it done, get a petition or whatever. You know, it's just something, it, it seems simple on the surface, but I realize, Jimmy, you know, it's not. But somehow, some way, we, we need to get something done, and I would appreciate it. We all would. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. One question for you, Mr. Pravat. Is there two issues there? I know you've got the driveway.
Yeah.
And then the debris itself is another issue.
The debris, if you are witnessing the debris falling out of the truck, there are state requirements that are, we're supposed to enforce, you know, here with the sheriff to be able to give tickets. We, I think we brought this up when we were addressing, taking things just into the collection site.
That's why I brought that up. We just addressed that.
Those same standards and fine procedures and everything, you know, work. But that's dealing with the actual people that drive in and the actual people that drive out, you know, with the things falling out of the trucks, rather than dealing with the business that's there. There are two different, two differing issues, so.
Mr. Pravat, would you consider a mud stuck to tires that's got nails embedded into that mud to be something that comes out of the truck or something that we can't help?
No. I mean, if you, if it's in there and it's deposited on the, the road, that's problematic.
From the truck?
From the truck.
You mean, where on the truck?
Yeah. I mean, they have specific requirements for tarping and other things that are designed to limit, you know, that, which are also violations that if you don't, you know, do those things. But it's still a violation if it's there. It's just like with, you know, you've got a little bag of trash in the back of the truck, and that bag of trash blows out and hits the side of the road. I mean, it's, whether it's a little beauty bag or whether it's, you know, a big old bag like this, it's still, still the same thing, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question about that, Jimmy. You know, I want to just go out there and put a lock on their gate and shut them down, but.
You sound like Live Oak.
The, the problem here is, you sound like Live Oak. Yeah. Problem here is that they went out there and did the least that they could do. They hauled a bunch of nasty melons in there and spread them down that hill. The elevation is so significant, leaving Boys Ranch Road and heading to the west up to where their office is, all that mess just runs downhill. So when those big trucks come out with clay, they're picking up all these melons, dragging them right out into that road, and then depositing all of that for the next 300 yards up and down the road. I sat here trying to find my photos. I've got probably 50 of them in here from January the 6th.
Well, I, I know over the last two or three years. I've called you numerous times about that.
I'd like to be able to put a stop to it because there's clearly public danger out there with what they're doing to those roadways. But if the issue is one of creating the paper trail and it becomes a civil matter later between the person with a flat tire and the business owner, I don't know that there's much that we can do about that other than help create the paper trail. But I would have to believe there has to be something that we can do to put a stop to this dangerous debris being drug out onto that road and, and left, because I've sent crews out there at least four times to clean up all that mess off that road that they leave, and they don't care. They clearly don't care. They couldn't care less. Whatever that woman said is, yeah, she, she doesn't care one way or the other, because they've had ample opportunity. They're not blind to the fact that this mess is being drug out onto the road, and they're not doing anything to go out there and clean that mess up. So I'd like to see us do whatever we can. And if it means revisiting the ordinances that we had addressed before, I know the concern for the board at the time was that we didn't want to hinder, you know, the ag businesses out there trying to harvest their crops and, you know, others in business.
Yeah. Well, that becomes the problem, is you have to make it so broad that the unintended consequence of messing with the businesses that aren't causing the problem.
But still, I mean, you know, I get the complaints, you know, even from those businesses when they're appalling things, you know, solids flying out, potatoes flying out. I mean, you know, it's, I know it's a big business, you know, here in town, but it's just a matter of, you know, a matter of degree. So that, that y'all are going to have to make, you know, the political choice on that, not, you know, you know, how broad you want to make it.
Yeah. I know the, the ag side of it is seasonal. You know, they only harvest a couple of times a year. The problem with this landfill is it's.
Twenty-four hours.
All, all year, five days a week.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd just simply say that as much as I appreciate agriculture and what agriculture does for our community, it's a staple in our community. There's a happy medium that we have to find with the residents and with the, those other entities that exist in our county to make our roads safer. And I know that majority of our, our businesses and our agriculture communities, our agriculture entities are doing their best and to make sure that, that they're not a hindrance or a problem in our community, but there are a few that I'm sure that push the envelope. And so I would be willing to take a look at these ordinances, because as Mr. Pravat knows, there's another ordinance that I'd like to talk about as well. It may be a good idea to just talk about them all at one time.
All right. As far as just dealing directly with them, there's nothing that we can do to dictate to them that they have to keep their dirt on their property? I mean, the problem is, is obviously the runoff and everything. It's, it's not that we're trying to make them go pave their road like we've done with these past few mines that we've opened up, but it's the runoff from the rain, the rainwater, and then what they're bringing out of there when they, when they're coming. There's, there's nothing we can do?
No, sir, not at this particular point. You know, they were, if for lack of a better word, you know, grandfathered in, it being in existence at the time. You know, when they go to make improvements, we can put conditions on improvements.
Yeah, right.
But, and with, at least by us pestering them, you know, they have made some improvements by putting the buildings and, you know, other things on there, so they understand that there's a little bit of problem, and we can make it a bigger problem for them, but we haven't chosen to do that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Lynn Stapleton. To county administrator and also to you, I think a simple solution to this, if you do some research, it's a very extensive application with DEP to open a landfill. I feel like with the landowners and with the county, if you address DEP with the concerns you got here, they can pull their permit quickly. And with what's happening out there, I think talking to the right people, you'll get the help you need, and I think you'll get it fast. And I think that's probably the best way, to make something happen quick, because they hold the keys. I mean, DEP comes in there and checks, they check the wells, they check all these things. If, if they have concerns to look at what problems they have there, I really feel like as much as they stay on top of them, if they, if they run risk of losing that permit where they have to close, they'll do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question for the county attorney, and I really don't mind asking this and putting you on the spot. You know that. I'm going to allude to something that I did a few years ago in the name of public safety. There was a business that was dragging stuff out, and I mean making a huge mess on a county road. I mean, deep piles of stuff for a quarter of a mile. And I pulled in there and visited and told them that I was going to give them an opportunity to clean the road up. It was apparent that they had been doing this as a matter of daily practice. Or I could charge them $500 a day to come out there every day and clean it up. And they cleaned it up. In fact, they did better than that. They put a stop to it. So my question, Mr. Pravat, is whether or not we actually have the ability to do that, because I've sent people out there on four crews on four occasions to clean that mess up when it was dangerous. And if we had to do that for every business in this county, it would bankrupt us, literally. So that's, that's a question. I don't know if you've got an answer to it or not, but.
I think it's a wonderful idea. Whether we have the authority, I don't want to say out loud in case you decide you want to do that.
Okay.
But.
I understand.
Okay.
Well, until we come up, Mr. Chairman, could we, could you at least contact them, Mr. Pravat, and tell them we are exploring our options here?
Yes, sir. I'd do that again.
Ah.
Like I said, they've, they've made some effort and acknowledgement, but.
And I guess, you know.
I like Mr. Stapleton's suggestion, except that when you talk to DEP, they will say that it's only their on-site stuff.
Right.
You know, they don't care about what's happening off-site.
So what if, what if we contact FHP DOT and have them? Unfortunately, out of that, I think you're going to, not, not going after the landfill, but maybe the.
The trucks that are there.
The trucks, unfortunately.
And, and some of it is, some of it is both. That's what, that's what we're seeing, is two differing.
Right.
Problems. One, not taking care of their business site, and two, the folks that are utilizing it are, are not doing what they're supposed to do in, you know, getting the things in there. So it's two methods of enforcement.
Well, maybe they just start feeling.
It's not the landfill's fault, it's the people coming to them that are depositing their debris along the roadway. That's the ones transporting it, unless it's their trucks.
Right.
But I, I know a lot of them aren't their trucks that are coming in.
That's right.
So that's why I said it's a two-faced issue.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Anything else on that?
No.
You got anything else?
That was the big one, other than the fairs going and come out and see us. I appreciate the chamber coming down and giving us heads up on this, and look forward to seeing how it turns out this year. But thank y'all for allowing us to talk about that, and appreciate Mr. Pete coming up here.
Mr. Sessions?
I was going to announce the fair, but, you know, it's still my thunder, but it's going on this week. I'm on the fair board, and we've got a lot of good things going. Have a great team out there that's kind of running the fair. They do a good job every year, all the volunteers that show up. Just like they said about Christmas on the square, you don't really know what goes on behind the scenes in a big event like that, but they do a heck of a job coordinating everything and, and making it all happen. I was up there for the, some of the hog weighing in yesterday. Actually, this is the first steer, the steer induction into the fair I missed in a few years because we're here. I'd be over there right now helping to unload the steers. But anyway, there's going to be a heifer show on Friday night. That's very interesting, and if you like that kind of thing. So if the fair's really going on, it's, it's a good thing for the county.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Richardson?
March 29, 6:00 p.m., town hall meeting at, in McAlpin, at the McAlpin Community Center. I'm going to ask the board to consider one thing. I have asked various times, staff being attendance to these town hall meetings, these are informational. These are not political in any way, shape, or form, they're simply informational to the community so they can ask questions. I would like to see staff attendance to these meetings. I would be willing to reduce the number of meetings that I have a year to maybe quarterly rather than monthly, if I could get buy-in from administrator to be at them. They're not so bad once you start getting there. Every once in a while, you get attacked by a few people, as the sheriff has, has experienced before, but it would be nice to have at least staff attendance. I will tell you this, Branford, last month, we had, in Branford, Greg Scott, Director of Parks Recreation, as well as Dr. Jackson, Director of Economic Opportunity, spoke at the meeting, spoke to the mayor, and three of the council members were there. They all commented that they've gotten more information from that meeting, just from the staff talking about what was going on, than they have gotten from all of the council meetings that we come in and speak to them at. It's just, it was a really good time for them to be able to just dig out that information and find out where we're going. So I would encourage it. I'm not asking for a mandate at this point, but it's very difficult to answer questions from one person's perspective when I'm not on the day-to-day, in the day-to-day operations of, of some of the decision-making.
All right. Is that it? Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't have much. I just want to shout out to Dr. Jackson for a job well done, what he does for this county, even though sometimes we don't know his hard work and what he does, how he do it. I heard him talking about incentive, the incentive program that he implemented. I was over at Carrissa Source last Friday, and they were talking about incentive and how everything match up, the jobs, how they match up, and they're using social security numbers to make sure that those numbers match, that, that this ain't bogus. Now, down south, they got two directors. I think they're going to prosecute him, but his numbers, his numbers is matching up with the jobs, even though Bright Stars have seven, seven employees, but it's seven more than what we have. So as these numbers come in and these numbers come in, there, there are some progress that's happening, and I just want to thank you, a job well done. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Only thing I have, I believe at 12:00 today at the fair's senior days, the lunch, if any of y'all want to take part in that. 6:30 tonight is the hog show. My little boy hates it. So it might be our last year. Other than that, I just need one thing, fella.
One thing real quick, you've been to the fair again, because I remember walking by you last night, but the corn out there at Mr. Ford and those guys are, was pretty delicious. Yeah.
Mr. Ford, we'll tell you right off the bat, he is supervising that event. Don't ask him to get up and do anything.
Okay.
But it was good.
It was.
It was good. Your first bite or two, you tried to be delicate, like not made him get it everywhere, but after that second or third bite, it's so good.
You don't care who's looking. Chew it up.
Just need to motion to adjourn.
Y'all selling corn at the fair? Y'all selling corn?
Worth going out there.
Oh, so y'all giving it away?
Is that the corn on the stick?
Yeah.
Corn on the cob, cayenne pepper, salt and pepper, or salt and Parmesan. It was pretty good. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you.